Being we got a new gavel, I figured I better hit it to start the meeting off with. So thank y'all for being here with Laura Cole. Our let's see Monday, May the 8th, 2023 meeting to order. And do I have a motion to go into closed session for the items listed on the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor? Oh man, we're that got lit up that time. Excuse me.
Yeah.
Let's see if we're better now. That's a little better. Thank you. All right. Got a motion and second all in favor with an eye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Thank you. Okay. My apologies. I forgot to hit the button. Thank you.
I have six o'clock. We'll go ahead and start back again, returning to open session. Thank you all for being here. And I think we've got a good crowd of students and others out there too. So we'll welcome all of those too. But thank you so much for being here. We appreciate it very much. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Wilson.
Okay. Well, we always have a moment of silence at the beginning of our meetings. And before we enter into this moment of silence, want to acknowledge that we lost one of our teachers last week, Mrs. Coice Hunter from Chatham Grove Elementary. So as we have the moment of silence, want to remember and honor her as we do. So let's bow our heads. Thank you.
We please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor with an aye. Aye. Any opposed? Like sign. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
They move.
Second.
Got a motion in a couple of seconds. All in favor with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Like sign. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Got a motion in second. All in favor with an aye. Aye. Any opposed? Like sign. Thank you.
Can I make one comment?
Go ahead.
To the consent agenda.
Go ahead.
I'm tickled to death to see that the East Chatham baseball and the going blank here, the Pony League, MOUs were straightened out and fixed and whatnot. I'm glad that all that came together. So that's all for our kids.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Jackson, looks like you got a crowd here. So I'll turn it over to you.
We do. We have lots of friends with us tonight. At this time, we're going to recognize, we thought that tonight, with this being our first official meeting in this room, that it would be appropriate that our first recognitions and when we get to our information session, that our first presentation in this room, that they be done by students. And so tonight, I would ask Dr. Moran to come forward. Here. There she is. And tonight, we will recognize our student advisory students. We've asked, so because we're new, we have to kind of give some directions. Board members, we're going to stand behind this table and the students will come this way and they will exit on that side over there so that we don't, we have just a space here to work with tonight. Okay. Dr. Moran.
Okay. So during this school year, we implemented our very first student superintendent advisory council, or at least it's the first in the 10 years that many of us have been on the cabinet. Students from each of our schools, representing grades six through 12, served in this leadership capacity. They attended virtual meetings with members of the senior cabinet and they gave feedback on a variety of district issues, things like code of civility, vaping in our schools, student discipline, school safety, and more. We often provided also presentations to our students so they could learn more about the inner workings of our school district. I have to say, these are some amazing student leaders. They were thoughtful. They had many great ideas and we will be better as a district because of their leadership. So we'll call out their names. Starting with Bennett Virtual Academy Serenity Cult Cotton. Also from Bennett, Blake Ritter. Chloe Stanifer from Bennett. From Bonly, we have Walter Patton. Also from Bonly, Bella Embree Thomas. Also from Bonly, Brett Phillips. From our School of Science and Engineering, Haley Maxfield. Noah Emery and Caleb Wilcox. And Lana Farrar. From George Moses Horton Middle School, Kaylee Spivey. Evan Bland. From JS Waters, Zaria Fuller. From Margaret B. Pollard Middle School, Cole Irvin. From Northwood High School, Natalia Whitaker. Alessia Yakano. Yakano. Also from Northwood, Aziri Quintero Aguilar. From Seaforth High School, Kyle Stinson. Fiona Zoe. Daniela Rodriguez. And Ivy Mitchell. Waylon Vos from Seaforth. Our students are also going to be working this summer on some back to school videos and materials that will also share our code of civility and some vaping information with our students to start off the new school year. So again, we appreciate their leadership and we're excited about this program. So our next set of recognitions are for our Governor's School students. We are excited that this year, we sent forward 14 student applications to the Governor's School Summer Program. Eight of our students were chosen to attend. These students will attend a four-week residential program from June 18th through July 15th. And all of our students who applied should be applauded for their hard work. This is not an easy application process. If you don't know, the North Carolina Governor's School is a four-week summer residential program. It is the nation's oldest statewide summer residential program for gifted high school students. Mr. Michael Triplet is our instructional facilitator for AIG and he will share more with you about the program and introduce our students.
We're learning.
We're learning. I can share a couple of other little pieces of information. The cost of the summer school program for our Governor's School students, it's around $500 per student. Our district does cover the entire cost of that for our students. It covers their room and board and all of the associated expenses for the duration of that four-week program. We utilize our professional development funds and instructional funds to support this opportunity for our students.
Here comes Triplet. Yes, that's what they do. That's what's taken.
Everything's a bit low for me. Okay. Good evening. I'm Michael Triplet. I am the IPF for the AIG program and with me today, I have Brooklyn Douglas, who is our high school IPF. And we want to take the opportunity to congratulate our Governor's School accepted applications today. The Governor's School was a four-week program through the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. And in that four weeks, it's a residential program and students engage with contemporary topics and social studies, natural science, English, dance, visual arts with leaders in their field. We had 14 students who completed the application process, which includes essays, videos, teacher recommendations, and the recommendations from their teachers. And of those 14 students, eight students from Chatham County Schools were selected to attend. And at this moment, I'd like to call their names for them to come forward and we put together a survival pack for them at the Governor's School. Okay, so from Northwood High School, we have Marissa Curz, Natural Science. And Rokeo Cisico, who is going for Visual Arts. And Christian Pomolpa, who is going for Violin. You had a great video, by the way. And from Jordan's Matthews, we have Andre Urina Cessina for English. Jaclyn Basilio for Theater. Brooklyn Qui for Social Studies. And from the Chatham School of Science and Engineering, Estefany Lopez for Social Science. And Estefany should get an extra round of applause because the day after she leaves from Governor's School, she's heading to Yale University where she will be part of a two-week residential program for Yale Young Scholars Program. And last, Sarah Turner for Mathematics. Thank you.
Perhaps the bumper sticker for tonight should be, Chatham students are competitive. What we have next for you are some student scholarships that were received by CCS students of late. Tonight, we're going to focus on two particular areas, the Morehead Kane and Dell Scholars. And to my knowledge, this is the highest number of Dell Scholars we've received in one year. And Ms. Michelle Burton, our Executive Director of Secondary Programs and CTE, will share more with you about the program and our students.
Good evening, School Board Chair, Dr. Jackson, Board members. The Dell Scholars is an initiative of the Michael and Susan Dell Foundation. This program is a scholarship and college completion program that nurtures and empowers students on their path to a college degree. Since starting the program in 2004, the foundation has supported over 5,000 scholars, including more than 2,000 college graduates. Each scholarship recipient receives a $20,000 scholarship, personalized support, a laptop computer, textbooks, credits, and access to a scholar's resource network, as well as teletherapy. This year, Chatham County Schools has the honor of recognizing six Dell Scholars from Jordan Matthews High School. This evening, we have Mr. Jeffrey Davis Che with us, who is one of those scholars. Other scholarship recipients who could not be with us this evening are Jolitzi Fernandez Arzate, Ricardo Rocha Benitez, Byron Martinez, Alexis Maldano Reyes, and Rebecca Narciso. The Morehead Kane Scholarship provides a four-year fully funded educational experience for exceptional student leaders at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. The Morehead Kane is so much more than a tuition and room and board free scholarship. It sets up students' potential. It offers and funds life-changing summer enrichment and extracurricular learning experiences. It provides an immersion in a dynamic student body in a world-class university. Our very own Brady Foster Andrew will graduate this spring from Jordan Matthews High School and he is our Morehead Kane Scholar 2024. Thank you very much.
Recognize mom and dad and parents in the back, please.
Yes, Jeffrey's family is here with him and Brady's family is also with him. And Brady's mom is actually a former Chatham County Schools employee.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we take a moment just publicly to recognize our National Board Certified Teachers. Six teachers joined our growing cohort of National Board Certified Staff. We greeted each of these new recipients for reception this afternoon, along with 78 total staff members who received the state's growth bonus for a variety of categories, including reading, grades three through five, math in grades four through eight, CTE, industry credentials, and also advanced placement testing. So we just want to take a moment to publicly recognize and thank them for that.
Our next recipient of an award is our very own Orlando Hernandez. He was one of only three North Carolina educators presented with the NAFEPA, National Association of Federal Education Program Administrators State Leadership Awards for his significant role in supporting and promoting activities and goals of our state organization. Mr. Hernandez is our Title I and migrant specialist. He has 24 years of service in federal programs. He served as Senior Database Administrator for Migrant Education at DPI, in addition to his work in Chatham County Schools as Title I Specialist and Migrant Recruiter. Orlando is a collaborative teammate who supports the development and submission of multiple federal grants, provides translation and interpretation services for communication with parents, and he works closely with our migrant student population. Orlando is loyal, dedicated, and is a professional who goes above and beyond to serve our students. Orlando, we're very proud of you and we're glad that you're a part of our CCS and ACIS family. Orlando received his award at the Federal Conference.
Thank you.
He's also quite the dancer. Next up, we have our Power of One Award. You know, monthly, we provide these awards to recognize an individual who had a powerful impact on shaping the direction of someone else's life. Our first recipient, who was already given her award at the school, is Ms. Kelly Ward, the Assistant Principal of Seaforth High School. She had several nominations, so I'll read one of those. Kelly Ward exemplifies the power of one as one person doing the work of at least three normal human beings here at Seaforth. Since last October, she has stepped up to shoulder the main principal responsibilities on top of her assistant principal responsibilities. Even though she's at school before most of us and is still here long after most of us have gone, her days are full of tasks and requests of every magnitude. We thank you for your service. The next Power of One recipient is Mrs. Dorothy Waterson. She's our Exceptional Children's Program Social Worker. This will chug at your heartstrings just a little bit. Ms. Waterson joined our CCS EC team as our EC Social Worker to provide direct mental health supports to our EC students. One of our students was in a car accident with his father and his father was ejected from the car and sustained significant injuries. And our student experienced increased difficulty with school and anxiety after the accident. As the family's home was not handicap accessible, they had to move in with other relatives as the father now has mobility issues. This is the kind of thing that makes me cry, y'all. Mrs. Waterson was able to single-handedly work with the community organizations and donors to have a ramp built and motorized scooter donated, allowing the family to move back home, allowing the father accessibility. She's also called the student every single morning to ensure that he has logged online for his learning and she's conducted home visits to ensure that he has supports he needs to access his instruction. She has demonstrated how the power of one can bring peace to an entire family and positively impact the trajectory of a student's education. Congratulations. And that's why we have the Power of One Awards.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tonight, we are here to recognize Ms. Jennifer Vasquez as our Excellence and Opportunity Champion for this month. Ms. Vasquez models our definition of equity each and every day by reducing the predictability of who succeeds and who fails by interrupting practices that negatively impact our students and school settings and by cultivating unique gifts and talents of every student. The staff member who recommended or nominated her says, "Miss Jennifer Vasquez focused on writing and researching important historical figures through the Black History Month in her first grade class. She sparked excitement and curiosity in her students. She creates an environment where all of her students' hard work is appreciated and is celebrated. Ms. Vasquez's commitment to her students is noteworthy and we appreciate her hard work and dedication." Our Excellence and Opportunity Champion. Congratulations.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We are, our Parent Advisory Council is recognizing our April and May EC Spotlight staff. And so for the month of April, we had Ms. Beckwith, who is an OCS teacher at Jordan Matthews. She is at her daughter's ballgame tonight and she had to step in when their EC department chair was out on maternity leave and she took on extra caseloads and she was nominated just for carrying that with out ever a word of complaint and a smile on her face the entire time. Ms. Ariselli Lopez is in ECIA at Pittsboro Elementary School, serving in our cross-categorical kindergarten classroom for some of our students with needing the most assistance with transition into school age. And she has been fulfilling the role of teacher for the last semester and has done it with such grace and dedication. And I'm excited to say she is on her path to becoming a certified teacher in our district. And Ms. Turner is an ECS teacher at Northwood High School and she unfortunately drove to Horton instead of here and so she may or may not come rolling in. But she was faced with the difficult task of welcoming back some of our most fragile learners after they lost a student last summer, sorry, he grew up with. And trying to convey to children who can't communicate and help them learn to process their grief and then find joy in school again. And she has done it. You go in her classroom, it may feel a little chaotic because they're communicating in all kinds of ways with their whole body, but these kids are making such amazing progress in her classroom. And then finally, for the month of May, I would like to recognize Ms. Lucy Wheeler, EC pre-K teacher from North Chatham Elementary. And Mr. Blyce and I had, oh, go ahead and clap and then I'll tell you about her. There he is. So Mr. Blyce and I used to debate whether elementary or high school was the place to be. And he always told me that high school was our last opportunity and I said, but elementary is our first chance. And she gives every child the best start to an education and with a smile on her face.
and full of energy. If you've ever been in a room full of three and four-year-olds who do not communicate in a traditional way and are on the go all the time, she doesn't sit down at all. And she still finds time to make me sweet treats, so we're grateful to have her. Thank you.
Chair, if there's ever any doubt of the great things that go on in our school system, I think you had proof positive tonight that across our county, we have amazing people doing amazing things for students. I want to just briefly share with you our monthly update around our connections and communications throughout the district. Our April Principals Meeting, you see photographs on the screens around. We really dug deeply into just really working well, coaching, and supporting one another. Next slide. We, our HR staff, in terms of our recruitment process, we're doing everything possible to recruit teachers. We're using the radio station, television station, homing pigeons, anything we can find. We're doing everything we can to reach and recruit teachers. The Chatham United Sports Day was a great day at C-4th High School where all of our kids had the opportunity to celebrate our kids who had, who bring differences to the table, but definitely not deficits. Our students had a great day being celebrated by their peers and by the students at C-4th. It was a great day there. Leadership Chatham visited several of our schools and had the opportunity to have lunch at Chatham Central and hear more about our avid programs, a great tour for them to get into our schools and a great tour and a great experience for our students. Our last AP Academy of the school year, we've been offering that all year, trying to build leadership capacity in the district. That is a commitment that we've made, that we will, we want to build the capacity of those who are in our district and give them opportunities when those opportunities come first. We were again, and I want to celebrate our music teachers and Sharon Allen and the work that they've done all year, but for many years, for the fourth.
The fourth?
Fifth year in a row, we have been selected as an outstanding, one of the best communities for music education. That warms my heart. Next, our CIS, the Executive Directors Meeting was held in Pinehurst, and I was allowed to come and share the relationship that we have with CIS as their executive directors met to talk about model programs from around the state. So I appreciated being asked to do that. Books on break, our Chatham Education Foundation continues to provide books to our students for the summer and did so well over hundreds of books were distributed to our students. And so they'll have books that will carry them through the summer and encourage them to, to celebrate the joy of reading. Next one, our Beginning Teacher Celebration. It was a great day at Pittsboro Elementary School where we recognize our BT ones, twos, and threes. Those are Beginning Teachers, ones, twos, and threes. Our BT threes are finished with the program. I want to thank Ms. Norma Boone and our HR team for the work they do with our Beginning Teachers. Our program was evaluated this year, earlier this year, and again, was identified as one of the state models for Beginning Teachers. We partner with UNC and their Beginning Teacher Project and really try to support our Beginning Teachers with, with the support that's available through their understanding that times have changed and, and you know, we, we can't provide as many direct mentors in the subject areas in a school building, but we can provide experienced mentors who support them across the spectrum. So it's a great celebration. We had two individuals complete the North Carolina's Aspiring Superintendent's Program, Carrie Little and Chris Poston, and we're going to celebrate them at next month's meeting. So we'll, we'll keep moving through that slide. Our Job Fair was a great day. We had everybody in on it. The recruitment process is every day. We know that this year, we had a good number of our folk referred by current staff. Hopefully, we'll do the same next year. And we had the Job Fair, which was well-attended, and our staff did a great job on a Saturday morning. We even had our Sheriff's Office help support us with the, the sign up on fifteen-five-oh-one to get you in. Also had the opportunity to attend the Triangle Art, the Triangle American Heart Association Campaign Kickoff. And then we do a lot of jump rope with the heart and things like that in our community, in our community and in our schools. And they were celebrating us for the work we've done here in the district over the years. Wolf Speed is going at it. They are meeting and all of our schools talking, speaking with not just our avid students, but all of our students about future opportunities that are coming. I just happened to be able to visit the presentation at JM. And our students were so very curious about opportunities that are coming and had great questions about what's next. And they're not only talking with our students, but they're also talking with our parents about opportunities. So not only are they building the pipeline with, with people, but they're also filling the pipeline with possibilities. So we're excited about that opportunity that they're bringing. Wolf Speed has been extremely aggressive in terms of just telling us who they are and what they do because a lot of people are not aware of, you know, what that little chip does and how it makes a lot of things work. So it was great for them to, to share that. And then we had our Welcome Home Event. This is our first month in this building. And so we, we've had, as a staff, we've been staggered throughout multiple places all over the district. And so bringing everybody together, we took some time this past Monday, just to, a week ago Monday, to just set some expectations around moving into our new home. And so we called it a Welcome Home Event. And so we had everybody here, but we spent a good three hours, three and a half hours, really just kind of getting to know one another and, and, and setting up how we're going to live in this new space. And I visited several schools, the band at Silk Hope. I'm just extremely pleased with them. They've grown from, I think, ten to fifteen students to now nearly a hundred students. Great, next one. Visiting, I talked earlier tonight about visiting our culinary classes. People always ask, are we still preparing, are we preparing kids for real jobs in the future? I want you to see, these are students preparing Caesar salad with lemon-infused crustinis. I don't know what that is, but it sounds good. But they were making it and doing great work, you know, getting out to, to our schools, the thrift store fashion show. And I, I took this picture, I take a lot of pictures at schools, but I wanted that picture of Moncurius Gym was just an amazing, just walking in and seeing that gym and seeing the condition that it's in tells me our maintenance crew, they're doing a great, great job. And sometimes that goes overlooked, but I take pictures of that and hallways. When I see shiny floors and clean bathrooms, things like that, I like to take pictures of those to celebrate the work of those people who are sometimes invisible. And so that's our, that's, that's been our month. We've got a lot going on. And so I'm really just thrilled at what our folk do every single day and, and happy about the work. And so I want to close by saying to celebrate our, our teachers and to celebrate teacher appreciation, educator appreciation. We are all teachers. We came to this work wanting to do right by kids. And so I want to celebrate the work that our teachers do every single day in every classroom. I want to celebrate the work that every other educator does in a building to make way for our kids to be successful. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Here that if our EC Award winner that.
If she comes in, we'll, we'll.
We'll stop where we're at and recognize her too. So we could just let her know out there, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Here out there too, so, but will you double check, please? Thank you.
All that is fantastic news. Thank you very much. A lot of great things going on in Chatham County Schools. We appreciate taking the time to highlight those and see, see our young people working at it. We'll, we'll move to our public comments, part of the agenda. And of course, here's the podium here. You have three minutes for your comments. Red light will come on later at the podium, but we'd appreciate if you stayed to your three minutes. And we'll go in order that they came in. And first, Julie Ricker.
Good evening. My name is Julie Ricker, and I'm a parent of two students at Perry Harrison Elementary School. In honor of Teacher Appreciation Week, I'm speaking up for a call for continual support of educators across our district. I appreciate that you center students when making decisions for our district, considering at each step the potential impact on our learners. But I hope that teachers are also considered at each crossroads. I recently heard the phrase, "Nothing about us, without us," and I immediately thought of educators. Teachers' educational background, their professional training, their lived experiences in the classroom should be valued and trusted, and their voices should be amplified when determining policies that affect the day-to-day work with our children. I commend you for having a teacher advisory council, and I hope you will continue to look for ways to allow additional input from a wider group of Chatham County Schools staff. I know that so much can be learned about the needs of teachers through time spent in their midst, observing their realities of school days and the obstacles they face. As we saw what Dr. Jackson has done, I hope that all of our district leaders are able to make regular visits to classrooms across our county and use what is learned to guide decision-making. As a parent, I have found school board members and district leaders to be very accessible and approachable. And I hope that Chatham County Schools staff members also see you as allies with whom they can safely and honestly raise their questions and concerns. I hope our teachers know that you are their advocates who will fight for their compensation, resources, and working conditions that will retain them in the profession and give them the tools they need to help students grow and thrive. I look forward to a time when the expertise of educators will be respected throughout our larger society and that teachers will be viewed as indispensable. Until then, I urge you as Chatham County Schools leaders to stand solidly behind our educators so they can be unimpeded in teaching and supporting our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Moose.
Be for the stand.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Jackson, thank you for your work and the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm a proud parent in the Chatham County School System and a proud product of the Charlotte Micklenburg School System. I'm a huge fan of public schools, and I know I don't have to tell you how vital they are. My reason for speaking tonight is twofold. One, to thank you for your recent resolution opposing the provisions in House Bill 219 that required local districts to share funds raised with charter schools without requiring the reverse. This would have under, would, and could still directly undermine the funding of our traditional public schools that our schools count on. And I want to thank you for standing up for Chatham County Schools on this issue. The second reason is as a concerned parent worried about the future of our public schools. I'm sure you've seen the recent flurry of education-related bills at the state level, many of which pose serious threats to public education. It's been dizzying as a parent to try to keep up with all of them, but they included private school vouchers for the wealthiest people, forcing public schools to fundraise for charter schools, placing unrealistic burdens on schools to do more with less, and making it harder for teachers to deliver an accurate, truthful curriculum. Collectively, these bills undermine public schools while reducing transparency and accountability, all while funneling state dollars to private and for-profit entities. At the risk of preaching to the choir, I believe public schools are a public good. And if we want our society to be healthy and thriving, our schools need to be healthy and thriving too. Instead of giving up on public schools or directly undermining them, we should be focused on resourcing teachers, staff, and schools so they can do their best job, fully supported. I realize there are limits on what you as a school board can do on state legislation, but please know there are parents who care. It's important enough to me to come here on a school slash work night of a busy week, and there are other parents who share these concerns and want to help our schools in being places where every student thrives. I want to thank you again for taking steps to protect our schools from potential negative impacts and encourage you to continue to stay proactively aware and take similar actions to safeguard our public schools' ability to help every student succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Martin or Martine, which way? Martin, got you. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Jackson and members of the board. My name is Emily Martin. I am currently PTSA President at Northwood High School, but I'm speaking tonight as an individual and not on behalf of Northwood PTSA or North Carolina PTSA, PTA. I'd like to thank the board for adopting the resolution to oppose North Carolina House Bill 219, the Charter School Omnibus Bill, which would require school districts to share funds raised specifically for traditional public schools with charter schools. I also encourage the board to carefully evaluate and take a stand on any state budget provisions or bills that take away funding or local control from school districts or that give people with no training in education control over educational standards and curriculum. Finally, I would like to ask, as I have before, that the board consider posting full video recordings of all meetings. Many of your constituents are busy at this time in the evening and aren't available to attend in person or to watch the live stream. And once the meeting is over, the live stream is not available after the fact. When the next election comes around, do you want voters to only see selected soundbites on social media? Or do you want them to be able to view the full meeting from an unbiased source so that they can understand the context and discussion that goes into your decisions? For a good example of how school board meetings are shared, please have a look at the Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools Board of Education website. For every meeting video, they post an index with timestamps for each agenda item. So if someone wants to watch the discussion on a particular topic, they can skip to that part of the meeting. We need this for Chatham County. Thank you all for your service and know that there are many of us who support you in your efforts to advocate for honest, accurate, safe, and fully funded public schools.
Thank you. And Beth Chang.
Hello to the Board Members, Superintendent, and Administration. My name is Beth Chang. My daughter Bella has attended Chatham County Schools since first grade at Perry Harrison and then Pollard and now C-4th, where she's a sophomore. I am also president of the PTSA, the Parent, Teacher, and Student Association at C-4th. Well, I was last year, this year, and I hope to be again next year, but I'm the only one running. So I feel pretty good about it. I'm here first to say thank you for everything that you do for our kids and our teachers and administrators. Your role can be thankless, I know. But please be aware that many parents, as Emily said, are grateful for your consistent guidance of the school district. Second, I'd like to highlight that this is an important time for C-4th. It's absolutely stunning what has grown out of bear land in two years. Mr. Creighton got us off to a fantastic start last year. And this year, Ms. Ward kept us together with help from Mr. Stenzland. C-4th is now a strong, thriving community. It's just two years old, however. And with neither Mr. Creighton nor Ms. Ward returning, we are at a crossroads. The choice of a principal and assistant principals is crucial to C-4th's continued growth. We have all four grades for the first time and the first graduating class. The right principal will have a vision for future years and will move the school in an intentional direction. That person will also help the community understand that we have more in common than we realize because there are some stark differences. And we, and the principal will also work with teachers in ways that make them feel valued and respected. With the addition of two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred students in the fall and the change of leadership, there are eighteen openings at C-4th. And that number may increase. We need to build a faculty, and I know you're working hard on it. We need to build a faculty that stays at C-4th and brings consistency. Third, I want you to know that the PTSA is here to help you however you like. I am told that a strong PTSA is attractive to potential hires, and we are a strong PTSA. We can, may I finish?
Quick clip, please.
We can speak to applicants individually or to, as a group, to tell them about the school. We can host an event at C-4th or somewhere in Pittsboro to welcome them and support your efforts. We can send emails. We can send emails, whatever you think works best. We want administrators and teachers to know what a fantastic community this is that is growing both in population and in the concept of what's possible and that they would be fortunate to have a place here. We are eager to do all of these things because we want the best candidates out there to come to C-4th or another Chatham County School and stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move along to information items and student leadership. We're okay down there, aren't we? I know. I hadn't got everything arranged like I wanted it either. I understand student leadership spotlight. Dr. Moran, and I think that student, I don't recognize him, but bring Mr. Stinson with you, I guess, there.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we are excited that our first student presentation in this room is is a student leader who probably needs no introduction, but I will still give one. Mr. Kyle Stinson is a C-4th High School sophomore. He was one of our first, was the first Power of One Award recipient, and he has worked to create several leadership programs in our district in the C-4th attendance zone. Kyle came to us about a year and a half ago after attending a leadership conference, and he pitched an idea to begin some Leader in Me leadership programs for students in the elementary and middle schools. Now, obviously, we have a lot to do, but it's really hard to say no to a student who is this driven, this passionate, who wants to be an educator, and who really wanted to give back to our schools and our students. So we worked to partner with Mr. Stinson, and we did support this at the district level. He'll share with you a little bit about other funding sources he received, but as far as any financial impact from the district, a lot of what we gave him were things we already had on hand, but you would say we probably spent around $500 providing materials for the students that he worked with, as well as snacks and books, materials, supplies, that type of thing. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Stinson. One thing I will say, we have a little bit of a technical difficulty this evening with the student videos. We wanted you to hear from students to hear how they were impacted by his programs. So when you have a free moment, if you would just look at those on your own, I think you'll see the power of the work that he did.
Are these on? We have we had these? No, so yeah, okay, okay. We've had these.
Thank you, Dr. Moran. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So throughout this presentation, I'll be updating you and informing you about the student leadership programs that were here within the district like Dr. Moran talked about. So a quick little thing about me, I'm a former Panda where Mr. Poston was my principal and a former Wildcat as well. I'm a current C-4th sophomore. I was the first Power of One Award recipient as a student, and I'm involved a lot in my community, serving along with the with Ms. Fowler on the Chatham County Juvenile Crime Prevention Committee as well. So the start of this really started in the summer of 2020, 2021 as well. I attended a student leadership conference in 2022 on the state level, and so that really kickstarted it. I needed something fresh and new to do, and I feel like that would have been very beneficial in our district as well. And so the vision really was developing younger student leaders in our schools because that's very important. Like a lot of parents have talked about, that is who will shape our school district. And so I wanted to help shape that future generation. Next slide, please. So some of our funding sources, so Bold, the construction company, provided a $600 grant so we can purchase leadership materials, books that I was able to provide to the educators, the principals to be able to showcase what I will be doing, and then also materials that I have used in my program as well. And I'm also thankful for the district for providing a lot of the materials that we needed for North Chatham because that would have been a financial burden on me as well. Next slide, please. So some of the resources used, so a lot of these resources have to do with the icebreakers or the games we do, and a lot of the resources also have to do with the content, including the Leader in Me book, which is what shaped this curriculum, the courses, the information I taught. And the Seven Habits of Happy Kids book is the book that students read throughout the North Chatham Program that I'll mention briefly soon. And the content in the Seven Habits of Happy Teens book is the content that I use to teach. Next slide, please. So I created a strategic plan to kind of get these programs jumpstarted. I couldn't remember everything in my head, and I needed to put it down. So after I created Core Beliefs, created these immediately after I had the idea, and it really stems around that every child is born a leader. It takes time, a growth mindset, but every child is born a student leader. It just takes time to prove that. And I also created core values that you can see at the bottom, some that are leadership qualities, but also that are some of my core values that I try and stick to, and we're not perfect, and I'm always improving every day, and I feel like that's something that every leader can recognize. Next slide, please. So I really did want measurable outcome in this program, so that had to do with the classroom observations, the lesson observations, and creating a lesson plan. Chatham County Schools has the Y. I see it all around C-4th every time. And so that's what I created in the lesson plan is a Y. What am I teaching this? So I tried to create measurable data where I would evaluate the focus of the observations, take notes on students, especially with my North Chatham program. I took notes on students to be able to see where they grew. And if we can click on that link real quick, that should work. There we go. This is a lesson plan, a brief lesson plan from the North Chatham Program. Yep, you can just scroll down there. So you can see that a routine was built, and I'll talk about that routine in a minute. You keep scrolling. But I tried to detail all the materials, the goals of the program, the focus, and a structure. So every week in North Chatham, we had kind of the same structure, and that was outlined all in my lesson plan that I would create every week. We are good on that. We can head back to the slideshow. So yeah, that's the measurable outcome. So our first program, I created two programs and I work with two others. So the first program that I work with is Margaret B. Pollard. So I work with their student council, I'm kind of advising them on what life at C-4th is like, particularly what student government looks like, something that we're really wanting to do is inspire those ideas, kickstart them. So over the summer for the freshmen who want to run for a student government position, already had those ideas going. And I also work with them on some of the activities they do, helping bridge them with Chatham Grove where a lot of their future students come from. Next slide, please. So Chatham Grove, I worked with them over the course of two days. The first day was just me. We talked about defining leadership, and leadership is just not about qualities. It's also about the whole person, who they are and the impact that they make. And the second day, we did a Q and A with some other C-4th students, and 100% of those members were actually actively engaged. They have third through fourth graders, and there's about 25 of them, and their advisor is great getting to control them, and I'm looking forward to seeing that the hard work they do. So the first of the two programs I created was at Pittsville Elementary School. As I am a former Panda, I saw the need for a new program there, and I'm glad that I get to constantly work with them. We have our last meeting on June 2nd. So teachers in this program chose students, and I really did want to see growth from students. Every student brings something unique to the table. I am getting a lot of the experience as a normal teacher is getting as well in the hour that I get to spend with them. So that's very exciting, and we wanted to build a community around ambassadors. So this program is called the Pittsville Elementary School Ambassadors because they get to act as reading buddies, make cards for the assistant principal for their appreciation week, and they get to really act as role models where students are looking up to them. And this is a picture of kind of the content that I put every time that I am with them. Perfect. So the biggest program is North Chatham. So the goals of this program were to develop the younger leaders, gain the teaching experience and insight into how our students learn. So instead of like Pittsville where it was students or teachers chose the students to be in the program, we had a application for students, and we were budgeting for about 20 students. We ended up having 13 apply, which was perfect because it allowed me to have one-on-one time with more students and help them grow individually. And I want to meet every student at their level and help grow them up from there. Every student has a different level, but I can help push them up from now, from there. And so we developed a routine as well in North Chatham, coming in, working on our quote form. I would come in right when they were exiting, so we'd take a minute to chill for them to talk throughout the lesson. I asked questions, and really, just like a teacher does where they ask a question, a student makes a comment, and they build their next lesson off of that comment is exactly what I did to try and engage the students. And so this program did focus on the seven habits of happy kids, and those habits are located right there. These are some photos from the program. I was thankful for Dr. Giles, Ms. X. Lee, and a lot of the fifth grade teens for helping me develop this program. A lot of communication has gone into developing these programs, working with the principals, the teachers, to set meetings, curriculum, all that type of stuff because I want to keep everyone informed. I think that's very important. So 70%, 76% of our meetings, that's 10 out of 13, had full attendance for North Chatham, especially with that being an after-school program. I was very happy with that. And 92% of students wrote positive feedback on their survey. And like I mentioned, I'm doing a lot of things that relate to actual teaching methods. And as you can see there, there are some student testimony from audio recordings that I took. And my favorite one has to be Kyle gravitates you into his teaching. I found that one to be very unique, but I'm very thankful for that student. Next slide, please. And we'll stop here for a moment. These are some of the survey results from, I had a survey that they did on the last week. This was over February 2nd to March 23rd, an eight-week program. So really, a lot of things had a focus with the icebreakers. There was an M and M icebreaker that they got to do, and every activity has its own purpose. So my favorite had to be, I liked how Mr. Kyle is nice and he's not bossy, and the program was really fun. Oh, and that we didn't have to do 50,000 worksheets. I definitely wanted worksheets for students to have measurable data, but we did not. They weren't bored. Next slide, please. And so this slide are some more survey results, and I asked students to kind of give a future input. My math teacher does this right now for future students, kind of tell the students what to expect for the next year. And so students really were saying, if you apply for the program, it'll be really fun. The leadership program was really great, and they liked working in diverse groups. Students told me when they were applying what qualities they wanted to see out of it, and the biggest one was teamwork. So I really wish I did some more teamwork activities, but that's something I'll learn for the future, and I took notes on all of that. Next slide, please. And those were those student testimony quotes, so you can take a look at those after, but next slide, please. And so really, to recap it, I do have a passion, and I believe it is my calling to go into education, and I'm honored to have the opportunity to join Chatham County Schools first teach Chatham cohort, and I hope to continue working on my leadership programs, expanding more, reflecting and conceptualizing and working with people with different people, and I appreciate Bold, the C-4th community, all the teachers, staff, principals, and lastly, the students. So thank you. Are there any questions? I was supposed to ask that. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have.
I have a question to Dr. Matten. And can you go ahead and draw up some kind of contract at this point?
Yes, Mr. Turner.
Okay, so when you went to Chatham Grove and when you were making observations, I noted that you put down that you observed one student who didn't feel like a leader. Did you talk to that student or?
Yes, ma'am. So I worked with their advisor to kind of talk with that student and inform them of kind of, it's not reverse psychology, but it's kind of making sure that they understand they are a leader, they are there for a purpose because every student was chosen for a reason, and they have something different. That student actually had a lot of good ideas to bring to the table, and with communication with that advisor, I definitely did pull that, sit with that student and talk with them. So yes, yeah. Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. And first, I just want to commend you for your initiative and for your organization, for such the positivity that you bring because I'm sure it's infectious with the kids, and it's, I remember as a kid, whenever someone wanted to hear my voice, it it mattered so much, and it was, it's really great. And so I was just curious what, what surprises you might have had or what were some of the highlights to you just personally? Yeah.
Oh, yeah, a lot of them in Pittsville, a lot of them like using stuffed animals, and they like throwing those stuffed animals, so I found that to be really funny. So we definitely get to reel it in with that, and I think North Chatham brought most of the surprises because I was with them for an hour. And so just some of the funny comments they made, some of the funny jokes, especially they asked me if they could use the bathroom all the time, called me Mr. Kyle, and so those were things I really did not expect going into that. But also, I would hand them the paper and say, do not touch this yet, and then I'd explain the activity, and I'd expect them to get started, and then they're like, well, you told us not to touch it yet. And so really, just a lot of the student comments were really engaging, and it's one of the things that I've learned as an educator, as a future educator, I definitely want to keep a quote book up what my students say because I feel like that's really funny. Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
I was glad to see the cohort for the teach Chatham and glad to see you were on there. And he's a great ambassador for C-4th. I went to a baseball game at Chatham Central a couple of weeks ago when they were playing C-4th, and guess who greeted me at the gate, as a matter of fact, all the way down, down to Bear Creek. So yeah, it's wonderful. Thank you for all this you've done.
We ended up getting them back the other.
Yeah, you did. I saw that one too. Yeah.
Any other questions? Well, I thank y'all for your time, and I was honored to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, my grandmother had a word for Kyle. He's been here before. That's why my grandmother would just say that. For those who know what I mean, he's been here before.
Item B, year-round school update. Dr. Moran.
But as you know, during this school year, we have been conducting a feasibility study to look at year-round schooling as an option for the Salar City feeder pattern. So tonight, we have an update for you on some of that information. I'm going to slide really fast through some of these pieces because you've seen these, I think, two or three times. But the first slide just shares a little bit about the project purpose, which was working with the RTI organization to help guide us through this process to measure feasibility. The next slide just shows you a little bit about the various partners and the types of roles that we had. So we had the various roles with RTI, ourselves as a district, the roles of families, and then also our community partners. The next slide shows you the proposed feeder pattern, which, as you may recall, was Salar City Elementary, Virginia Cross Elementary, Chatham Middle School, and you'll see Silk Hope and Jordan Matthews on there. Silk Hope was a proposed site location for opt-out opportunities for families who might not want to participate. So that was the feeder pattern we were looking into. The next two slides just kind of recap the history of this project and where it originated. Actually, prior to COVID, we had an interest from our principals in this feeder pattern, and we had started going down the road of looking into this, and then COVID happened, so that did slow that process down just a little bit. Also, this slide just kind of recaps why now, and really the impact of COVID, particularly with this particular feeder pattern. It was just another reason why our principals wanted to look into this as an option. The next slide, overviews and recaps for you, how we designed the study and kind of gives you some of the particulars of things that we were looking for, and no decisions had been made. We really went into this with no preference in mind. We wanted to just see what we could learn, what the research told us, and then see what our community members had to say. When we first went into this, we had conversations and also received feedback from you about how will we make this decision as a district? And four of the areas that really rose to the top first were staff support. Would we be able to sustain this? Would our staff have a high enough, high enough interest that we would be able to serve the schools? Family support. We want to make sure that our families felt supported with this change and would be able to mitigate any challenges that it might cause for their families. We also, of course, wanted student learning to be at the forefront of any decision that we make, so making sure that any type of plan that we put together would focus on student learning. And then the last piece is the operational and community support. We know that this would have an impact on us as an organization, and also we would have to have the commitment and buy-in from community organizations in order to support this. So those were kind of the four areas, and so in a little bit, when we get to making some decisions, we'll revisit these four. This is a timeline of the various community engagements that we had, and the next slide shows you more specifics. We had design sessions, 25 meetings total. You can see a breakdown there. We met with school staff, district staff, and we had 16 different planning meetings with RTI. The next little bit there shows you that we had seven community partners that we met with. We had five meetings and engaged over 35 different community partner members. And then we had our in-person information sessions. We had three district-led in-person sessions at each of those schools. We had one virtual session and two recorded sessions in both English and Spanish. And then we had three of our schools that also provided follow-up presentations with their specific school sites. And then finally, the questionnaires. We had one staff survey and one parent slash community survey, and we had over 800 responses.
Dr. Moran, just to fill everybody in, 16 meetings with the RTI, what significant, what does that mean? And what does RTI mean and the purpose?
Sure. So one of the things that we identified early on is that none of us in the district were experts in year-round schooling. Many of us did not have the experience with that, and so we wanted to use a trusted partner who had experience. So the individuals that were assigned to us from the RTI organization had been superintendents, teachers, and administrators in year-round schools. A lot of the meetings that you see there in that 16, some of those started as early as our Summer Leadership Institute where we talked about this with our both district leaders and our school leaders. And then many of those sessions also were basically keeping me on my toes. They would meet with me every other week to say, have you done these things? Have you followed up with the schools? How is the survey going? They also created a lot of the materials for us because we still had to make sure that we were focused on, you know, doing school visits and all the types of things that we do on a day-to-day basis. So they really helped guide So they really helped guide this work forward to make sure we had a solid process. Um, and to make sure that we didn't come into this also um with any preconceived notions. So they kind of kept us um moving forward, um because, you know, a lot of things going on in the district. So it was helpful to have that um guided partner to be able to keep us focused. Um, the next couple of slides share with you the year-round school um legislation, and we've gone over this kind of in detail previously, but there are specific um legal aspects that we have to follow. Um, if we were to adopt a year-round school, you may recall, one of the benefits of this particular feeder pattern is that many of these, these things don't apply. Because um several of our schools in that feeder pattern are um schools that are identified as restart schools. And so we already have calendar flexibility built into that. So that was definitely a benefit. And the next slide, if you'll keep going, one more. This shows you a side-by-side that shows you what a traditional calendar would look like. That's on the left. We'll let the screen catch up. You'll go one more. One more. And then on the right, you'll see an example of a year-round calendar. Really, it's the same amount of instructional days and really the same amount of breaks. They are just um distributed differently. So it's the same amount of time that is away from school. It is just broken up. So you see on the traditional calendar, we have three kind of major break buckets. And then on the other side for year-round, you notice that we have that nine weeks of instruction, then two to three-week break, and then that repeats itself. Previously, we also talked about some of the benefits and challenges of year-round schools. So I'll go kind of fast through this next couple of slides as well. Um, some of the um benefits are regular breaks, staff morale, um being able to um have more extended learning opportunities for students and aligning with the Community College calendar. Some of the um impacts are not matching the calendars of other schools, um extended times where there's not childcare during the school year, and then lack of alignment to other existed existing district prac practices. So now we'll get to, um, you'll go one more slide. The review of the survey feedback. So the staff questionnaire, we had a hundred and fifty-eight responses total. And you can see in the chart there, um kind of the percentages for each school. So um the highest majority of the staff feedback came from Virginia Cross Elementary and Siler City Elementary. And that just shows you the breakdown of the number of staff who participated.
Dr. Moran, um, few slides back, the percentages. Is that, is that a good return? Did RTI say anything? You know, thirty-one percent, it is thirty-one, you know, on one hand, if that's your test score, that's not good. But on a, but on a survey, that could be great.
So on that particular slide, what that is showing you is that thirty-one uh percent of the overall responses came from Siler City. Thirty-seven point nine percent came from Virginia Cross, ten percent came from Chatham Middle, and twenty percent came from Jordan Matthews. So there's really no positive or negative there. It's just showing you the actual breakdown of how many people at each school participated.
Well, I guess my question is not the thirty-one, but the forty-nine, forty-nine out of the whole staff. Is that considered a good return on survey or?
It kind of depends. I think we've, we've had surveys that we've had thirty percent of staff respond. We've had some where we have a hundred percent. I think it kind of just, just depends.
Question that um thinking back on that too, that, you know, when I look at Chatham Middle, that's ten percent participated. That means ninety percent didn't. And that would be cons-
This is ten percent of the of the hundred percent of all four together.
Okay, okay, got you. Gotcha. Okay.
The number on the left is just the one that from each, each school, correct? A staff member from each school just add up, yeah.
Keep going through some of the slides. It might make a little more sense as we get a little further into the data, kind of how it's organized. Um, the staff questionnaire, um, this next slide breaks down. There you go. Thank you. Um, the overall percentage of staff that were in favor of this as an idea for us to explore and those who were not in favor of this as something that we would consider to move forward. Seventy-three point four percent of the staff who responded to the survey were in favor and twenty-six point five eight percent were not in favor. And the the bar graph will show you in blue, you see the um number of participants from each school who were in favor and the number that were not in favor.
When you say in favor, you mean in favor of exploring it, not necessarily in favor of doing it yet, but just in favor of exploring.
Because at this point, we've made no decision. So really, the way we ask that question is, is this something that you feel our district should continue exploring um to move forward? Is this something you think would be beneficial for our district? Um, you can see there, the the vast majority of the interest came from Virginia Cross and Siler City. Um, and I didn't have all of this on here. It was a lot to fit on the slides with the way our screens are, but ninety-two percent of Virginia Cross staff were in favor of this. Um, eighty-six percent of Siler City staff, Jordan Matthews, it was twelve percent interest, and Chatham Middle was um six percent. So the vast majority of the interest came from um the two elementary schools, which you'll see in a few other slides.
And just having in the elementary schools first or for a few years, is it going to expand?
So we had not made any of those decisions. So um there are any number of ways we could have started. If we choose to move in that direction, we could start with one school. We could start with all of the feeder pattern schools. Districts do it in many different ways. And so part of um our decision-making and recommendation is going to be based off of kind of how the data unfolds. So the next slide shows you um the staff feedback on if we were to move forward with this in your school, what would your desire be? Would you stay at your current school and work there, or would you request a transfer to another school? Overall, seventy-five point four percent of staff said they would remain at their current school and would want to continue teaching there if it became a year-round school. And twenty-four point six percent of the staff identified that they would want to request a transfer. But if you look a little more closely at the bar graph, you'll see that the vast majority of those that want to transfer really came from Jordan Matthews, which we identified early on. The high school was not one that we would pursue. Um, but we wanted to still get their feedback early on. And then um Chatham Middle had a a small number. Um, but again, Siler City and Virginia Cross were where you saw the the vast majority of staff in favor. Now, this number of or percentage of um staff transfers, we felt like could be um easily um uh moved in with any type of regular um movement that we have with teachers um in a given year, because this is a relatively small number um that would want to transfer. Um, so that was not um a major concern at this point.
And you would have teachers at other schools that would want to be part of this.
That is correct. And we were, obviously have not been at a point that we have surveyed the other schools, but if we were moving forward, that would be something we would certainly want to do. And we had many staff reach out to say, if I wanted to work in this school, could I transfer in? So we felt like with the interest and just kind of natural attrition, um that was not a a huge impact.
And so just out of curiosity of the research at RTI, have they um done any studies that they have mentioned about, you know, in their overall research about how it impacts retention and recruitment of teachers?
Yes, the vast majority of the research for single-track year-round schools, which is what we were looking at, um staff retention was higher, staff morale higher, and then absenteeism for staff um was minimized. So the next um set of questions, we asked staff, if we moved in this direction, would you be interested in working the intercessions? Because the research told us that moving to a year-round calendar in and of itself does not really increase student achievement. The um single-track programs that had the highest movement of of closing achievement gaps for students were programs that were both year-round calendar and had a solid intervention and enrichment program built into that. So we wanted to make sure that a part of this process and looking um forward, we wanted to see if staff would be interested. This was the area that is a little bit concerning, because if you look here at the data, we had only twenty-seven percent of staff that said that they would definitely be interested. We had about thirty-four point eight percent say that they definitely were not interested. And then some said we might be interested. Now, I will say, our staff have always stepped up during the summer. We've never really had a huge issue with um staffing our summer programs. But this would be an area in my mind that would be a little concerning, because we would have to have staff members to be able to make sure we had a quality instructional program. It's not a program where you would want to just bring in anyone, um because we want to have high-quality instructional intervention um programs for students during those intercessions. So um not terrible, but not probably as high as I would have liked to have seen.
And and how would it affect um intercession ability, uh opportunities for teachers, you know, that might want to participate in summer programs and things like that?
So more than likely, and what we heard from other districts we spoke with, is that many of the teachers in these schools were teachers that worked in the summer anyway. So they would just move that um additional employment for those intercessions. Um, and many of our teachers do um take us up on that summer employment. Um, usually, they can make a higher rate of of pay with us than they can with um another type of um business or organization. Um, I think it's just too early. I think people probably selected that possibly button because they weren't really a hundred percent sure. That's my, my guess.
Is it the idea that you would have something scheduled at every intercession and or would some truly be a, you know, vacation time for the teachers and the students?
What we heard from other districts is that they have a blend of the two. So they might have two weeks of solid intercession where they out offer the opportunities and the programs, and they may have one week that is a a true um break. And they're usually half-day programs as well.
And if teachers wanted to participate in professional development in the summer, I mean, I assume that that's you know, something that's more focused on the summer, not exclusively, because we have people doing that year-round. But with with, is there an impact on the teacher's ability to participate in professional development opportunities?
One of the main considerations we did hear from some of the districts we spoke with is that they really had to work as a total organization to make sure that any opportunities provided in the traditional calendar were also provided to teachers in a year-round calendar. So um alignment of professional development days had to be very carefully planned out to make sure that we weren't leaving teachers out in schools that were um on intercession. So that's where you have to get very um kind of like we do with our school of science and engineering and how we plan that calendar alongside of our um traditional calendar, making sure that it aligns. We would have to do the same with a year-round calendar.
And if they were wanting to participate in professional development opportunities external to the, what our school system provides and, you know, not having that opportunity in the summer, is that, would that be impacting our teacher's ability to do that?
So um we had that same situation in our current summer program. So if a teacher signs up to teach during the summer or during an intercession and an opportunity comes up and they want to uh attend a state-level conference or a meeting, um they just let the the site supervisor know that and we work to find subs. So we always have subs for any of our summer um enrichment types of programs that would work similarly.
And so that it wouldn't, it wasn't, it wouldn't have a consequence to them to participate if it became year-round for them to leave the classroom to do that?
Correct. Yep. The next set of data we have is um from the families. So um we had overall five hundred and fifty-two parent responses. Now, I will say um some of the um aspects of this survey, that if I had to do it over again, um I would definitely want um to have RTI work a little more closely with helping um plan this part out. So some of the families answered the survey multiple times. So we did have to go in and back out the multiple um submissions to make sure that things were um on the up and up, if you will. And then we also had families that um let us know that they had children in multiple schools. So you'll notice, um while I give you the total breakdown of the number of parents from each of the schools, we took whatever was their first submission, that's what we took. Um, but you have, really, if you think about it, there are more um students represented than the five fifty-two, because many of the families had three and four students. And so tha- that was a little tricky um with the parent feedback. You can see, though, if we just break down kind of the initial response, um thirty per thirty point six percent came from Siler City, forty-one point three came from Virginia Cross, sixteen point six came from Chatham Middle, and eleven point four came from Jordan Matthews. I will say that um particularly Siler City and Virginia Cross work extremely closely with communities and schools and offered several um follow-up opportunities for families to come in and complete the surveys on paper. Um, they had Spanish interpreters as well, so that families could um ask questions. Um, also, um the Hispanic liaison worked closely with some of our families as well to help um answer questions that they had. So I think that's why you see those two schools have such a higher rate of um survey participation.
And you said that some of the surveys were done on paper for parents that might not have had access to the internet to do it online, so.
Correct. And what we did with those, we had um actually our PR team helped with that. They entered all of those into the digital format, so RTI could help pull the analysis out for us. The next um question for parents, or the first question is, is this a concept that you think would be something you would be in favor for our district to um move forward with? Fifty-two point two percent of families said this was something that they thought would be beneficial and forty-seven point eight percent said it was not something that they would want to see us move forward with. And the next slide, and this is one I was not able to break down by school in the same way I did with the staff, because parents, you know, entered it for multiple schools. So I didn't feel like the data would be um as reliable um if I broke it down by school. The next question for families was, um if the school district moved in this direction and became a year-round school, would you want to stay in your current school location as a year-round school? Or would you want to transfer to another school location? And you can see sixty-six point two um percent said they would want to stay and thirty-three point eight said they would want to transfer to a different school. Um, this particular slide is one that depending upon if it was something we move forward with, this is a little concerning, because Silk Hope alone would not be a large enough location to be able to take thirty-three point eight percent of those students. So it, if we were to be interested in moving forward, this would have to be something that we would really um take into consideration. And the next family question, um we asked families if they would need childcare during those intermissions, because many districts we spoke with said this was a huge barrier for families. Um, I was surprised by this one. Um, forty-one point three percent of our families said they would need childcare and fifty-eight point seven percent said they would not. Um, this was a little bit smaller than I think we anticipated and very different than what other districts um had to say. We also think that this particular, um this one is is also trying to think of the right word. This is a really important slide, because our community partners would have to help us with that childcare piece. So while we would be able to provide the enrichment and the intervention, our community partners are having many staffing challenges currently. And so when we met with the various community partners, um some churches, they shared with us that they had concerns that they would be able to provide the number of staff that we might need in order to be able to provide quality childcare. So it's, it was somewhat a good thing that we didn't need quite as many um families who had um identified that they needed the childcare. But we know that 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 is an issue, because many organizations are being hit with staffing challenges.
And so I have a question about that too. Um, you know, could, thinking about Siler City and you know, nonprofits and seasonal workers, like you can hire someone for a summer. It's a lot harder to hire someone for three weeks and then hire again for three weeks and hire again, because it's not consistent employment. And so, um, I wonder if that would affect the quality of those programs um to have to constantly retrain people for, to do those three-week intervals. So how that might have in impact some of the programs that our kids benefit from, that wonder how much parents are thinking about the loss of those potential programs.
Right. Um, the next and the final question we asked families is, if this was something that we move forward with, would the families desire tutorials or enrichment? Um, or would they not? And you can see there, thirty-one percent um were interested in the tutorials, thirty-five percent were not. And some said they just weren't quite sure. And I think probably similar to the staff, it's probably a little bit too early for families to kind of think that far ahead, two years ahead, if they think they would um would need that or not. So um the next piece that RTI did for us is they took, there was a lot of narrative feedback in the survey. They took that and they summarized it for us with themes. And so the benefits that both families and staff identified were some that we've already heard, reducing summer learning loss, time for staff to give individual attention to those that need it most, breaks for staff, time for families to travel more often, particularly this came up um quite a bit with families that needed to travel to other countries to visit family members. Um, breaks for students as well, ability to focus on the students with needs, schedule aligning with um work or college, families being able to continue to work. Um, this one was interesting. Um, so in several of the parent sessions, families told us that during the summer, they often will have to quit their jobs because they have to take off for such a long period of time. And they felt like the smaller intercessions, they might be able to take breaks with their work and might be able to stay employed. And then um other benefits, many of the staff wanted to remain in their current school and felt that this would be a benefit to have them stay. Some of the barriers that were identified by staff and families, students in a single family not being on the same schedule. So if we were not doing both the elementary, the middle, and the high school, we could have families that would be impacted with multiple schedules that they would have to maintain. Childcare, um sports schedules for middle school. Um, we talked about this quite a bit and because we are um our students in middle school participate in working and competing against other our students in middle school participate in working and competing against other school district, um, schools. This was not as huge of an issue, but it would mean that we would have to really work to make sure that those schedules aligned. Staffing for childcare is, we already talked about, um, not enough space potentially for opting out families. Family work schedules came up both as a benefit and a barrier. Um, just hard to understand and change is hard. That would just came up over and over again. You know, we're comfortable. We kind of understand how things work. Change is going to be really hard. And then the last one was staff with children on different schedules. Of those, um, staff members who identified that they would not be interested in staying in their current school. The main reason touted was because they had children in other schools that were on a traditional calendar. So, um, that tended to be a barrier for staff. So kind of going back full circle to, um, what we indicated would be our top things we would look at. When we think about staff support, it's clear that we really do have, um, staff support for this initiative. Um, really the concern about the intercessions would be the only kind of major factor here, um, in thinking about staff. We think that the movement of staff could be contained within normal attrition and other interests of staff moving in. Family support, um, this obviously is a number that we would want to see higher. We see that only fifty-two point two percent of the families were in favor. Um, I think as we worked with our community partners, we learned that this is just a concept that is new to many of our families. Particularly our families that are coming from other countries. You don't have year round schools typically in those countries. And so, um, on a first pass, this was really complicated for families to kind of wrap their heads around. So that lack of understanding and, and buy-in for families is certainly something that we have concern about. Student learning is obviously the thing that we want to be focused on the most and we do feel, um, that this is still an option that would be beneficial to our students. We have tutorial funds, we have summer programs that we could use during the intercessions. And we feel like this is an area that we could definitely support. And the last box, um, if you think about the data, we know that we have the district capacity to be able to do this. Many districts around us have done this as well. It would impact busing, technology, professional development. But those are all adult challenges and people challenges that we feel like we could work through. Um, however, the community, um, interest as far as the community partners being able to support us with um, the childcare and or other types of staffing, um, that is concerning when we think about the operational needs to pull, um, a year round schooling off in, in the Siler City feeder pattern. So those are some of the considerations. And the next slide, we have a recommendation at this point in time. Um, we feel like the, the feasibility study, it does reflect, um, that the Siler City stakeholders at this time are not quite prepared to support the further research or planning to move in this direction for a year round school calendar. However, um, as you see with the data that we provided, we do think that as we have more growth in our district, we recommend, um, to the Board of Education that we continue to further study other innovative, um, school models, including year round um, calendar, uh, as well as magnet or choice schools for families. Um, because we feel like there is enough interest still there in the community. We could also work to make sure that we continue to educate, um, individuals on what some of these types of options could be. Um, because we know it would be beneficial for our students, but at this time, um, that would be a recommendation. And I'm happy to answer, um, any questions that you may have.
Well, I, I've, I've had a number of questions and so I have one more. But first, thank you for working with RTI to collect this data. And, um, it sounds like it's been very helpful in getting a picture of how that might look and how it might impact. And I just wanted to suggest that if we do further research in, in the Siler City community because we have so many, um, people working unusual shift hours and, and also having people that work multiple minimum wage jobs and, and then we also have the language barrier. Um, as, you know, everyone's fully aware in Siler City, um, and not exclusively in Siler City, but a higher concentration there. That, um, that when we ask, um, favor versus not in favor, that we might add a variation of that question to how much would this impact you? Because you can be in favor, not in favor light, or you can be not in favor because this would, you know, greatly impact my ability to afford childcare, you know, and to the positive or the negative. And so I wonder if there's a way to, to measure, you know, consequences on your family or financial and, and not. And those are the people that may not necessarily be able to show up at the meetings to give that anecdotal sort of feedback. Certainly being able to do surveys by paper was great and being able to, you know, pa- pass that out and have communities share that. It increases your chances of getting more of the vulnerable families, I guess. And so my concern in this would be making sure that we really got a sense of how, um, the pros and cons of families that might be vulnerable to being able to afford. I mean, and it might be that, you know, three weeks is so much easier on them financially. Um, but, you know, s- some of the families that I've talked to in Siler City express concern that it's easier to do a whole block of, of a time of childcare than to do these three week intervals here and there. But of course, that can be very different had I talked to a different family member who spoke to me. So I realize that, but I, I think getting a sense of how it impacts vulnerable families would be important to me as a board member to know. So, thank you.
I was just gonna say, the last slide where you said you were gonna explore other ideas. Yeah. What's it, what did, what do you mean by a choice school?
Well, right now, uh, we are growing community. And so there, there are choice schools, that magnet schools, theme school, like we have a choice school. It's our science, engineering, techno. So, uh, early colleges, things of that nature, uh, additional ones. I, I would say that, uh, part of, while we recognize the Siler City stakeholders may not be ready. We, we did not explore other communities simply because of the, the runway that it would take to get authorization to do it. But as we look at new schools, I think it's important for us to recognize, I learned a piece of information just last Friday. We will be the only school district in this region, um, after this fall without a year round school. Without a year round school, op- opportunity or option. And so I would just say that as we grow, we need to begin looking at and knowing that there's going to be kind of a migrate, in migration as well, um, that people are choosing our community and they're choosing it based on school options sometimes. So if I'm moving here from, you know, Virginia and my child's been in a year round school and there's no option here, then I, I've, I've said, I, I've, you've helped me make my choice about where I'm gonna live.
Are the districts who are using it around us, are they doing it for, um, kind of crowding issues or is it, is it solely for the single track?
Option, just options. It, it varies. I know in Wake County for something that multi-track they do for, for, um, uh, not necessarily overcrowding but for, they call it efficiency, using a building more, getting more out of that building is what they use it. But Lee County has a year round school. I mean, I shouldn't be advertising.
I'm hoping that we even explore the year round for our teachers sake. I mean, I, I'm all for looking for other options too. But it does not address the, the, the stress factor, you know, in our teachers. So this is good. I'm not been in favor of exploring this through Siler City Elementary and Virginia Cross, but I understand why we're doing it. But is there a way that we can explore our other, how other schools feel as well? And then if we did decide to go that way, we have a choice of picking schools other than these two.
The great thing about this process is that we learned a lot. So we have all of the research that was provided. We have a process now that we could pull from if we did decide to, um, do another study. Um, and I think as a district throughout the planning of this, we just learned a lot of the ins and outs of what would be, um, the things that we would have to change in our district. So, um, even though this is not something we're moving forward with at this juncture, I think a lot was gained through the process. And we honored that request of our principals at some of our, um, schools that were struggling the most. And I think that's important to listen to our school leaders, um, and take their concerns and their ideas seriously, which I think we have shown that we did.
I think something that, uh, from twenty-five or thirty years ago, when I looked into this and with two other principals. Um, Dr. Houston and Mooresville was one of the leading, um, school systems at the time. So we went to visit them and, and there were two, two takeaways that, uh, really resonated. And that is, um, the only way you can truly get the, the understanding across to the parents is to have what he called T-meetings. And you would meet in people's homes, four or five families. He says it's a hard task to do, but he says there you can, you, you make those connections. A survey doesn't make that connection. There, there's too many what ifs and all that. So if they're not comfortable, they'll just say no.
I think that's where you see that results so high in those two schools that did just that. They had those follow-up meetings in small groups with community partners. So that's a great, great idea.
And, and the other big thing was, he says, once you get to a survey, this was exploratory. But you get to the survey of the nitty gritty of, are we gonna do it or we not? He says, if you don't get eighty percent, he says, I didn't say seventy-nine percent. He says, if you don't get eighty percent, forget it.
That's right.
And, but that only can come after you have gone to the nth degree to, um, uh, inform the parents of, of all the ins and outs and the angst. And the big, the big thing that stopped us back then was that, uh, there weren't any real after-school programs at the time. There weren't any, um, um, YMCA support programs in the communities and all that. So the, the big roadblock for us was, uh, what do you do with them for three weeks? So, um, that, that in itself kind of answered everything, um, pretty straightforward. Those things are in place now. And so if it, you know, uh, to pursue this, it'll be, it'll be a job to, to educate and inform the parents. And, um, um, again, it, it's, it's not a all or nothing. Uh, you, you start at one school, start, start at a two grade levels and that grade that, that they work up through or something. So there, there's many possibilities. And so, um,
And then piggyback on what Mr. Ham is saying a little bit about, um, you know, sometimes people rely on their older siblings for childcare. So I didn't know if the, in the survey, if parents understood that, uh, you know, JM students wouldn't be available and on a different schedule and if they were relying on older siblings for childcare.
That definitely came up. So when you, um, when RTI took all of that narrative, there was a lot of it, like seventy pages of it. When they took all of that and broke it down into themes, that childcare thing really encapsulates that. But we did have many families say that they rely on their high schooler. And so that was a huge, um, barrier for families.
Right, right. And just, uh, this is kind of a curiosity question. We talk about other schools. I know there's a lot of talk out there about late high schools and how it, you know, benefits teenagers to come to school later. And that they learn better when they get more sleep. And I wonder if any, any schools in our communities do that. Doesn't, do you happen to know if that, if they're doing that?
In our, in, in, in the region, yeah, I think Wake County is having a pretty detailed conversation about it right now. And I think Durham has done, I mean, you, 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 you flip and it goes back and forth. I, I've seen it because then they, you, well, there, there are challenges on both. Any schedule you pick, you're gonna have some challenges. At- athletics will be late or athletics will be early, athletics will, and so transportation, they'll be, they'll leave early or they'll come home late. So you're, you're gonna give up something to get the scheduling. You have to figure out to which degree, uh, does the schedule give us the most benefit? That, that's really what you're gonna have to, Wake's having a pretty healthy conversation about early start and late start for high schools right now.
And, and part of that with their, the way they stagger their buses and stuff, some of that's already being done. You know, the high school, you know, got some elementary schools there starting at seven, I think. And the high schools later. So, uh, you know, so it, it's possible.
So, so with you all staff friends, what we'd like to do is maybe leave that door, leave it where we are. We've got the initial framework to do a study now. Um, and then I think, um, just, I think taking on what, um, uh, Ms. Turner said. You know, there may be a school community that would be interested, more interested in doing that. But I think Mr. Ham has the right, I think, position on this in that we will need guidance from the board to set what that threshold will be for support. That you all would be comfortable moving forward with. And if it's eighty percent, if it's eighty-five, I, I've operated with, you know, an eighty-five percent or eighty percent in some districts. But you all, if you all would set that threshold for a school community getting that kind of support um, from staff, teachers and having X amount, then that helps us kind of go through. And it will give, I think, communities a sense of, okay, here's what our benchmark is if we want to move forward and do this.
And that benchmark is, is needed.
Correct.
After you have all the T-meetings.
Good question that I'm left with is how much does it reduce learning loss over the summer? And how much of a benefit do you anticipate seeing for student learning if you put a year round schedule in place? I mean, how much of a difference are you expecting to see? I know, and I understand that there are other benefits, like reducing the stress that teachers are under. And there are lots of benefits just from having a different schedule. But in terms of the classroom and the student achievement, what does that actually look like?
So there are a variety of white papers that RTI pulled for us. Um, and so I could, I'm happy to share more of those if you're interested in, in that. Um, I can't put exact number on it because every community was a little bit different. And the way that they, um, scheduled their programs also seemed to have a huge impact. So those districts that just did the calendar change saw very minimal, if any, um, change in student achievement. And those that had the more robust, um, intervention programs and enrichment programs saw the larger gains. Um, but there were definitely white papers that did show that there was that, um, statistically significant change in student outcomes. So I'm, I'm happy to, to share those with you.
And one parent asked me about, you know, when they were talking about student outcomes, if the RTI studied, had studied populations similar to ours. Um, someone suggested, and I don't know if this was an assumption they made or if they actually read this, but that, that, that RTI was studying more affluent communities or more suburban communities. But, um, I don't know the answer to that. Do you, how they compared to us?
Yes, most of the research that they pulled were meta-analysis. So they were pulling from, you know, hundreds of different research studies in a wide variety of different communities. Most of the research that was out there, um, that we encountered that was not in favor was usually multi-track. Interesting.
I guess my questions would always be, you know, there's gonna be an additional cost. And you're talking about, you know, moving, moving students to the opt-out school, then you're gonna provide transportation there. So that's, that's a cost too. And as far as the studies, I've tried to read a bunch. Oh, you have, you have studies that say that there's a huge difference, especially with the interventions. Which means that the students don't go home, you know, maybe a week out of that three-week period. Whereas you've got others that you have people that say that three weeks off is about the same as, uh, what? Seven, eight weeks or whatever during the summer. So it's, it's, and, and community has a lot to do with that, I'm sure. So, thank you very much. We appreciate, uh, doing all that. All right, we'll move to action items, technology purchases. Uh, MacBook refresh, Toshiba, Toshiba copiers and printers. Ms. Brunton.
Good evening. I have two technology purchases that I bring before you tonight to maintain our support and sustainability for services in schools. The first one is for MacBooks, uh, that would be refreshing devices at three of our four schools that are scheduled for our refresh cycle for next school year. That would also allow for our expansion at C-Fourth High School as we've added, we're adding another grade at that school. Um, these are devices that, uh, would be replaced on a five-year cycle. So these are two thousand and eighteen devices, those that equipment would end up being reused, uh, reused or reissued appropriately to various staff members as needed or become student devices. Some of these that are no longer able to be updated would also be taken out of service. The second item is for a one-year extension of our Toshiba contract. Those provide copiers and printers to all of our schools. We'd be working with Toshiba on the sixth year, uh, in order to provide both black and white and color printing, um, at each of our schools. They do have a minimum, um, print, uh, cost that they would expect us to meet. Uh, since I've been here for three and a half years, we have easily met that minimum quota for copies in our schools. Uh, and then, um, I will mention that because this is our extended year, they are actually offering us an even more discounted, uh, price than they have in the previous five years. So that would be a benefit for us. They've agreed to replace our machines that have been heavily used. They've agreed to replace our machines that have been heavily used with over a million copies. Or those machines that have had a number of repair tickets on them.
I moved that we allow the purchase of the hundred fifty or the MacBook refresh. Can we make this in one motion? Adam, we can't, Kate, one. And, um, we do the extra year on the Toshiba contract extension too.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? All in favor with an eye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed lights on? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B. Uh. Universal breakfast and paid school lunch, Mr. Mester, Ms. Oskar. How are you? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, before I turn it over to our school nutrition, uh, director and business office. Um, we, they will come before you tonight with an awesome opportunity for our kids and families. I never thought that I would stand in front of the board with this opportunity for that to come. But we did learn a lot from the pandemic when our kids were eating every day. So, um. I, I hope you really like fantasy.
Definitely was. My interest was pricked when I read this, that's for sure. So I was, yeah, definitely. Go ahead.
Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Jackson, thanks for having us to, um, tonight. Um, first of all, I'd just like to start out to say that we are under many federal regulations to operate our programs. National school breakfast and school lunch programs. And we have to, um, meet the standards in terms of, um. Increasing costs equitably every year, um, based on a tool. Um, and we also learned, as Mr. Messer said, um, quite a bit during the pandemic. We saw, um, incredible participation, particularly at breakfast. Um, and we know that breakfast is very important. Children who are hungry, who come to school, they don't learn well. Um, they have behavioral issues and it also increases absenteeism. Um, so what we're proposing tonight is that, um. We go universal, meaning that we will provide, um, free breakfast to all school children. Across the district versus a particular geographical area that we have done in the past. Um, and this is twofold. Um, it gives kids the opportunity, but we're also proposing that all high schools. Um, implement a second chance breakfast because we know, as you just discussed, that, um, high school students. Um, are a little bit languid in the morning and they're not hungry and their bright brains are woken up and giving them a second. Opportunity to get a meal when they're more alert, um, is beneficial. And, um, for schools that we have implemented these programs, we have, uh, seventy percent higher participation in those high school programs. Um, and lastly, uh, we. Increased our lunch cost by fifty cents, um, this twenty-five cents, this past school year. And we haven't had a price increase since two thousand nineteen. And of course, the pandemic, um, prevented us, um, from having to increase it. But what we're proposing is a fifty percent increase to fifty cent. Not fifty percent, but fifty cent increase to four dollars. So I'm gonna put it in perspective. So now you have free breakfast for every child. A child could come in and just get breakfast to supplement, maybe a lunch pack meal that they're bringing from home for lunch, or they can still participate with us. But the child or the family is only contributing four dollars a day for the lunch meal. And if that child ate with us every day for both meals, it's a saving of two hundred and fifty dollars per child per school year. So we hope that that you do consider, um. And agree with us that this will benefit our students and agree upon the price increase. And then the universal meals for all students and second chance at the high schools.
I know that the Chatham County Board of Education approved the, uh, breakfast changes as presented.
Second.
We'd be breakfast and lunch too, wouldn't it?
Breakfast, lunch, everything she said.
Okay. So got a motion, the second, uh, question is, well, I have two and, uh, just informational more than anything. Uh, second chance lunch, do they do that like after first period? When when's that done?
Second chance breakfast?
I mean, breakfast rather, I'm sorry.
We're proposing that each school implement it in their cafeteria versus having kiosks. Because it will help with any type of behavioral or, um, hall management. Um, and it would be after the first period or some.
Light break or whatever. Okay, that's, I was kind of figuring that's what it was, but I wasn't sure. And I guess my other question is, I think it's wonderful. I've done my reading. We're, how are we affording this in particular? I know you've picked up and I know these things.
To our finance manager.
Okay, that's fine. I I think it's wonderful. I just wanted to ask the question.
The increase will help. I'll say that we're also gonna increase our cost, our prices on all the parts. Our snacks are going up, um, on, you know, just extras. We're gonna go up on those. We know we're gonna lose some revenue, but we feel that the benefits for the children are way more important than the little piece of revenue.
I want to chime in and just say that we were able to accumulate a lot of fund balance during the pandemic. And this is a way to use some of that money, S R money, to kind of see where we're at financially. Um, and trying to provide a free breakfast to kids every day. Um, I don't want to say it's gonna be two or three thousand dollars, but it will be a little more than that. But we'll just kind of see where we're at in the year if you approve it. But we're using fund balance that accumulated during the S R period during the pandemic.
I think that's one of Dr. Jackson's novel things that we need to be trying. I think that's wonderful.
Serious.
Well, uh, I, I told someone before the meeting that, um. You know, this is for two years, Washington figured it out. And now all of a sudden, i- it's dumped on our shoulders and y'all have done a great job. But you can find with a thirty-one trillion dollar deficit, you can find more money to send here, send there. And I'm not saying they aren't good causes. Don't get me wrong there. But we can't figure this out. The kids can come to school and just eat and and work it into the fixed. Do the budget. And so I'm, I'm, I'm not talking to y'all. I'm talking to Washington right now. But, um, it it can be done because it was done for two years. So, um. This is, this is monumental.
And Mr. Ham, there are other states that are passing legislation to pay for those. So maybe North Carolina will someday, hopefully soon.
We do actually have a bill and I was gonna chime this in because I didn't have the information prior to, um, writing this. But, um, House Bill eight forty-four, School Meals for All Act is actually now in the House. And I encourage you to write your representatives a second.
Forty-four, eight forty-four.
Forty-four.
And there is a county or two, I think, that is providing.
Well, the county, but I'm just saying national.
I I know, I know, but but there are some counties in North Carolina that have gone back and done this too. Am I correct on that? Okay, okay.
And I'll just say that we were physi- this fiscally sound when we operated under free meals for every student for lunch and breakfast. No district took advantage of this and, um, that's been heard all the way up to Washington.
Yes.
We'll take, if we decided to do freelance for students, um, for the district, it would be to the tune of around one point one million dollars. Okay.
Thanks for working that out.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
We're ready. Have them, uh, uh, any other questions, comments? All right, we're ready to vote. All in favor of the motion, um. Say aye, aye. Any opposed lights on? Thank y'all very much. We appreciate it. I think that's wonderful.
We have one more item, our budget.
I'm getting there. Item C, new school nutrition, twenty-three, twenty-four budget presentation. Go ahead. Y'all are up.
So, um. We, uh, did some amazing things. First of all, we knew that we were having the rug pulled from under our feet in terms of, um, providing every. Child a free breakfast and lunch. So we had to go from a free system back to paid. And so, um, luckily this did not take place over summer. So we were still able to feed students, um, in our summer program. We fed over eight thousand, um. Breakfast and twelve thousand, oh, I think, five hundred lunches, um, during the summer we had, um. And we actually had an operation budget of three months, which is remarkable. We haven't seen that in a very long time. In this county, particularly since the, um, the new regulations went in place in two thousand and ten. We did some good things with that money. Um, I took my teams and a lot of my managers to both regional and national, um. Uh, training and we did a very extensive back-to-school training with our staff. Um, some other highlights for this school year, we knew that we had to be very competitive to keep the students. And staff still coming and eating with us. So we decided that we were gonna continue with our premium offerings. Such as having, um, one hundred percent Angus beef hamburgers on our menu, our charcuterie box, um, which was very popular. Um, we also did some very good, um, in-service programming. We have three dieticians on our, um, staff. And, um, one, um, goes in and works with our pre-K, getting them familiar with, um, school meals and, um, school nutrition. And you see, uh, there's a list of things that we can say that we are very, very proud of. Um. For to date, as of March thirty-first, we had fed, um, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand breakfast and five hundred and sixty-two thousand meals at lunch. Um. Breakfast participation again was down this year because of, um, the paid factor as well as our lunch, um, participation. Um, but it stayed steady, lunch stayed steady, and that was very important to us. And it was due to the changes. We also performed a survey, a student survey, um, in mid-March because we were curious what the students really liked about our menu. As we were planning for this coming year, which, um, we are working on our current bid now. And the students, um, gave us a lot of great feedback and we were gonna keep those things and keep that momentum going so that our participation stays up. Average daily revenue is twenty thousand, um, dollars a day and our monthly claims is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So we'll talk about the budget for next year now. Um, as always, we always have. Factors that are unknown, that we don't even know the reimbursement rates yet, participation is unknown. We're hoping with breakfast being free, that it's gonna increase, increase our participation. We're hoping to get up to fifty percent at breakfast participation. That would be wonderful. Um. Increase in the lunch to four dollars. The increase to the whole budget next year, I think, was five percent and it's mainly because of labor. Food and supply costs. All of that has just really hurt us this year. However, Mr. Master can speak to, we were doing a lot better than we anticipated this year with these costs that were rising. So I'm excited to close April and see if we're sending that now. So, um. Got some grants coming, supply chain assistance grants. We've had two of those, so. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars roughly. Um, anywhere I can find free food, I get it. And we are, it's like a puzzle that we're trying to put together with all of this entitlement money. So we're going a different route next year with our produce because we had a really hard time this year with produce. So we're, we're gonna see how that goes. Actually, we had Cisco was the only, so our food and supply bid were the only ones that renewed with us. We're going all back out for milk and produce again. So that'll come next month.
So lastly, we just like to thank you for our space and, um, it's gonna be very beneficial to have it in-house. And we hope to do and be financially sound with this program and our ideas, and we hope that it's at the benefit of the students.
Thank you. I moved at the Chatham County Board of Education, just waiting on me, huh?
Waiting. I was waiting.
Well, I'm not gonna move anytime. I moved.
How about for a cookie?
Is it sugar-free?
Can be.
Um, I know that the Chatham County Board of Education approved the school nutrition budget as presented.
Second.
I should say, any questions, any discussion? All in favor with an aye, aye. Any opposed lights on? Thank y'all very much.
Mr. Chair, if you, if you don't mind, I'd like to just introduce, uh, Mr. John Woods. He's our new P I O. He's just here, um, visiting tonight and has been helping out up in the corner. So just didn't want us to leave.
See ya. Second time again, yeah, yeah. Thank you for being here. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Got a motion, got a second, all in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed lights on? Thank y'all for coming. Thank you. Ms. Jenkins, how are you?